Go ahead. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and call our retreat back to order.
That's our work session.
Yep. Oh, okay. All right. Sorry. Okay. So I think we're gonna spend a little bit of time this morning. Excuse me, just finishing up on what we were working on yesterday. So I believe we went through A, B, and C. So the first three priorities. And so I think we have the last two to go over. So.
No, we went through D.
We went through D, I think.
We went through D?
Just had one left, I think.
Yeah, we went, we did D.
Oh, okay. So we just have the last one. And then I know, Mike, you wanted to talk about.
Yeah.
And Carol, oh, and Carol did share the notes with all of you. It's with your state. If you have your device, it's with your state email account. So that is all available that you can see. Well, I see John's space in there. I see someone else in there. So everything that you shared yesterday is in one place. That's the same place that we can track any notes from this morning that you want to add from your groups and discussions. Sorry, Mike.
If people have it open, can they, is it like a Google Doc? Can they make changes in real time?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
So if anyone has it open and if you're, if we're talking and you want to make changes, go ahead. I don't have, sorry, I don't have my device with me, so. Okay.
As I said yesterday, when we left, I think this was probably the most difficult. And that's why we always save it for the last. Probably the most difficult and probably yeah, the most important. If we don't have a good climate, a learning climate for kids, none of the other things make much difference. In fact, you know, I would argue as a, as a teacher, we have so many kids who aren't engaged in their own educational process because they are being bullied, harassed. And it's, it's difficult one. It's, it's difficult to handle. And I would argue too, that majority of these kids have no advocates. As others have said during COVID, I think it was worse. Have that adult at school who cared about them. And we were able to take some. So looking at what we've had in the past for goals, I don't think anybody argues with number two. Learners will have access to mental health services and support some community, schools and communities. Now, how we get kids connected with appropriate services, I'm not sure. Hopefully, that's, that's done in the school system, within the school system. But again, when you have a COVID situation like we had this year, kids get largely forgotten. So help, help me with this as we go along, guys. Is there any objection or something that we need to say in addition? One of the goals is to provide mental health services to kids and give them emotional support. What else do we do?
I think especially in light of a conversation yesterday, you know, I mean, it seems like that is a important, impressing issue, right? Something that I think a lot of students might need, whether they realize it or not. I think they, it seemed like a lot of self-realization yesterday and that, you know, kind of they were feeling a certain way, you know, and maybe they needed to get some help, right? So I think, or at some point during the pandemic, right? Maybe they were feeling, and they weren't necessarily talking to their families or their parents. So where are they going to get that help? I mean, it has to be probably in the school, right?
And I don't want to, I don't want to insert this and cause this to stifle the conversation, but I can tell you that we are going to be releasing some information with some of the money that we're using to focus on this, this exact issue. You know, as Robert said yesterday, that all this did was exacerbate what we already knew was a problem and bring it to the top. So I still want you to have the conversation, but we're not ready to, I can't give you really an official overview we're going to do yet, but we are going to have a very targeted focus on this issue with a lot of money behind it.
So, so again, I'm trying to, trying to gauge all of you. If you have some thoughts, please, please jump in here. So today in the school system, instructors are supposed to report incidences of bullying harassment, correct? I mean, we're supposed to do that. I mean, we have a form. In fact, does the department require that? And what do we do with those forms? What happens to that? Should you tell them what the process is and how it's actually being used by the department?
And we, and I don't know, who do we have on staff that has, that does those reports? And we have that data. I couldn't give you the proper overview right now. Janelle, is that in your, Amy's not here today, sorry. But we do, we do have the information. I can get that to you. And part of it, we have some data that again is sort of, I'm not prepared to share yet, that has given us a picture of what that status is. And it would be from that information. But that's, we're not prepared to share that publicly yet.
I don't bring that up to be critical. I want you to know that. My concern is that we're actually using it for some purpose. Because if we're not, what's the point?
And yes.
And I'm concerned that we're not giving schools the direction to say, this is critical. And I would guess that there are schools that didn't send any of that information in. That be fair?
You know, we, we wouldn't know what we would know, you know?
But look, you know, we have to, we have to look. But to do that, we have to make it a priority. It has to be really important. And again, my argument is that without a safe learning environment, kids are not going to learn. And so what could be more important than actually, let's use the tools that we have at our, at our disposal? I feel like I'm preaching to the choir.
I don't have any exact numbers for you, Mike, but your question is really an important one. And we absolutely agree. So when schools look at their conditions for learning data, we also encourage them. We have toolkits that we have them look at also incident data. And one of those reports of bullying and harassment as, as part of that whole picture of what are the data elements that are going to tell us the children and youth feel for this school? Yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I was just gonna kind of follow up. Learned yesterday, so many of these kids are withdrawing. And so do we have any other tools to really identify the bullying that's going on? And the condition of the schools is one tool. But do we, is there anything else that we have?
So there's, there's two approaches, I think, that are really important for any of us, bullying and harassment. And one is we, that we have reporting systems in place, that we have safe and caring learning environments. And the other is to teach, you know, to teach our school staff about how they, how they recognize bullying. And then if they do, are the processes in place and are they being followed to be able to analyze appropriately? Does that help?
Yeah, I think we need to talk about the conditions for learning survey and giving schools the tools that they need to analyze it. I would also think that it's very important that students are involved in that process, right? And so what guidance can we release to school districts who are willing to get students involved in this process? Because if students are engaged in creating a better environment in their school, the students who, even if they don't end up doing that successfully, the students who are engaged in that process are going to have another school experience. And so I think as the Department of Education and as Board of Education, we have the responsibility to say that this is a priority for us to involve students and release guidance or direction for schools who are looking to do that. Because when students are analyzing that data, they see the issues that are going on in their school. And sometimes they can talk more about specific bullying incidents that happen in school that wouldn't necessarily come up on a survey. Because students just aren't either willing to take the time to write it out because they don't care, because they know that it's probably not, nothing's going to happen with it. Or they're just not willing to share that on a survey and write that out. So.
So it's any sort of data analysis, looking at systemic change in schools and addressing such large issues like this. You don't use just one piece of data, right? So the conditions for learning survey has really critical areas, like the adult student relationships. How connected are you with an adult? How connected are you with peers? As well as emotional safety, which has everything to do with bullying and harassment. So that's one measure that we use. But we also use the incident data of suspensions and portions and incident data of bullying and harassment that we look at. And also chronic absenteeism. And so those toolkits, the guidance we do give is when you have those data and in those conversations with all those data, you have youth teams that come together that help analyze that data with you and help to identify what their root problems are, what the root causes of why they're able to look like they do. And then come up with the, with the appropriate solutions that meet that problem. So the guidance and our training that we have around piece of these data include forming youth leadership teams. As much as you can form youth leadership teams all the way down to third grade, right? So it's appropriate, it's age-appropriate. That's the strength of having data for schools to look at. It's the strength of being able to pull all constituents together, community as well. Because that's also part of the guidance. Parents, well, the community begins, which includes that.
So how do we know if they are actually following through with this? How do we know if they're creating youth teams? How do we know if they're actually involving? Because I feel like that's huge. And that's a really important piece. Because if they're not, then they're making these decisions behind closed doors and they're analyzing this data in the dark, right? And so, I mean, how do we, do we know? Like, do they, I mean, how do we, how do we know which, which, which was just your turn?
So there are schools that we can't know that. Our comprehensive schools and our targeted schools. Because we are with them. So we do know what happens with comprehensive and targeted schools. But with the, you know, vast majority of schools that are not identified as comprehensive and targeted, there is no requirement that we, that we say, you have to give us these assurances. Or you have to provide us the process that you're using to analyze these data and to gauge.
I wonder what would happen if like the Department of Ed modeled what a youth team would look like? And then those students who are on the department's youth team, working to analyze the conditions for learning data or to rework the conditions for learning survey a little bit? Because I know that, looking through some of the questions, there were things that were missing that we actually need to have data on, that we, we just don't. And so then those students could be like, wow, this is really cool. How can I get this started within, within my school? And if they have support from the superintendent of their district, then.
I, you know, I like that idea. The other thing I, you know, to kind of also think about having some model schools that do that. Because we have some high schools and middle schools that do a really great job at involving youth in these conversations and have, have boosted not just their, you know, culture climate, but also their academics accordingly, right? Because it's a great hand in hand. It's a group part of books on mental health. You're not also focusing on student voice. If you're not also focusing on academics, it's the whole kid, right? So I think providing those models of how schools have done it.
Yeah.
And highlighting it, kind of building them up can really help.
Yeah.
As schools struggle with.
I kind of like the Hannah model, that you bring kids in and you talk about that harassment, bullying. That wasn't really on the agenda yesterday, but we got it, didn't we? Because the mask issue, we just asked about the mask, mask issue. And you see the, the bullies and the harassers already doing their thing, you know, because of that.
Yeah, I doubt any of those were good or anything, you know? About that, that probably wasn't even seen as bullying harass, you know what I mean? So, which is crazy.
Interesting kids will use their opportunities.
Something you have to understand is that people who are bullied will also harass others. It's not one or the other.
Yeah.
Another issue that you have that is probably the biggest issue from my experience, it's the cyberbullying. And that didn't happen in the school, but it impacts relationships within the school. So.
Yeah.
People hide behind their computer or social media outlets and will engage in such behavior. And as a school official, that's hard to get a handle.
Talking with the super, the superintendent of my district this year, I realized that discipline, like disciplinary action within the school for bullying and harassment is not a clear path forward. It's so complicated. And that's why students need to be trained or at least given the opportunity to stop that within themselves and figure it out. Or at least have the opportunity to discuss the effects of the behaviors that they're, that they're carrying out within the school. Because, right, it's not just one person doing it to another. It's, it's a lot of times it's a back and forth where you're giving and you're taking. And you're both putting down each other. And that's, that's hard to discipline because they're both doing it. And you can't necessarily punish both of them because you know that there's a reason that they, they, they took that action. And so I think it starts with student, student groups within the school where you talk with the students and figure out how they can, they can do that. Because it doesn't always get reported to peers.
Is there any training? I mean, I know on the first day of, not even first day of law school, but an orientation, they, you know, sit there and they tell us that, you know, just to be careful with social media, you know, you're embarking on a career, your law school career that begun, begins right now, you know? And anything that you put down, you know, Twitter, Facebook, whatever, all of that stuff can be found. And, you know, any employer can look at that. So I just, I mean, it just might be a good idea just to mention that to students, just saying, especially like in high school. You know, I mean, once they graduate, I mean, college admissions can look at that. I mean, anyone can look at that and decide whether or not to hire you, whether or not to accept you into something. So I mean, those things, those comments that you make on, those are there permanently. You know, you have no ownership over it. Once you put it out there, it's out there for everyone to see. So I don't know if they do any training on that or anything like that, but it might just be worth mentioning at the beginning of the school year, you know?
Yeah, I wouldn't, maybe everyone else knows this. I'd like to kind of know what, what ability school districts have to monitor, let's say, online bullying. I don't know, like legally.
There's quite a bit within there if the device is provided by the school. I mean, obviously, if you're talking about personal devices, but you know, when you're in a one-to-one school and I can, I'm just speaking from experience, we were able to identify potential instances of self-harm through our monitoring. So there, there is tools that can be used for that. There's also parent tools that they can use, but it can have to set it up. So there's always ways around it, but there are things available.
Don't require, John, don't we require schools to have an action plan for dealing with bullying and harassment? We require them to do that.
It's for your safety.
Yeah.
Yeah. Issues that there's, there can be, you know, and referred to. The school can track things. That's, that's true. It's coming through.
Yeah.
Because I know that there's, we get, well, last year we put it in system where if there was signs of patterns of danger, we would get an automatic alert. And I'm not sure the, all the electronic connections behind that, but it just kick it out to us like, here are some flags.
Was that on a school device or on a, okay.
Yeah.
So, but if it's their personal.
It's the, it's the.
Their cell phone.
And that's it, yeah.
And students know that schools track what they're surging and they use that against each other to bully and harass each other. Like they sign each other up for explicit sites in their emails. And then they get called to the office and have to figure out who signed you up for that. And so, I mean, you should monitor it, but students find a way to use it against each other.
But then it goes back to Barbara was talking about, then you have to pay attention to behaviors. You know, the students and attendance and the things that you see, because it, the how is always going to change. So we have to watch what's happening with the child. And that's some of the measures they try and put in place. And additional training. And again, I wish, I think in a month from now, we're going to have a very different conversation about this. But all the things that you're sharing are the things that we know are a priority. And there's going to be some additional tools available to really address this in a much more effective way because of what we've seen. You know, it's, it's, it's a pretty, it's not just the kids either. It's the, it's the adults and it's our families and it's the communities that we support. So there will be a much more expansive effort on this, trying to use the tools that we have. Because we know the data we have reinforces that it's, that it is a concern. So when we talk about priorities and how we can use funds to maximize the most expansive change, this is going to be one of those areas.
So deserving to be an education piece to this, is that, is that where you're going, Mike?
I think so.
I think.
Yeah, I think so.
You know, the group we are not talking about very much, except Anne just mentioned, the parents guardians. You know, there's three groups of those people. The ones that don't want to come because they think there's not an issue. The ones that come and do care and the ones that think it's not my kid. I.
Sorry.
That was a handed. But I think, I think.
Just trying to build off of what Hannah's talked about. I just, I just think that you have to engage kids in this whole process. And if nothing changes, we have, we have a, this is such a difficult issue to deal with. We just kind of push aside, I think. And we don't deal with it. We just keep putting it off. And as adults, we model really bad behavior. We bully each other. And.
Well, the kids can see that.
The kids see that. You know, so.
How many times have you seen a kid that's a bully and then meet their parents? I mean, I, you know, I'm not saying this is true all the time. But boy, boy, you know, it's like, wow.
Yeah. So I think engaging bullies, engaging other students in the district and engaging parents and community members. I think that's important. What, what, I guess what I'd like to see is for the department to give us an action plan. I'd like for you to give us an action plan. What is it we can do will be effective? And if you think we need more time to do that because we have more data coming out, that's great. But I, I'd like to have a suggestion or a recommendation.
I have a really big plan, but I can't share it yet.
So in August, can we?
More to come, please. Yes, but yeah, I think you will be very pleased with, with.
I'm going to trust you.
With what the, yeah, it's just, I, it's not in a, I'm not, I'm unable to share all that with you right now, but there is a very targeted plan.
Is there something we should add to?
Yeah. Well, so I think that's the question. I mean, from the department standpoint, what, what is your, your job is to identify what's the priority that you want? You know, so if you want the things you shared, you want an actual item. But what is, what are you looking for? Targeted involvement from students, targets involvement from families? Is your action item simply a request for the department to act on this? And I think that's, you need to think about what your, as a board, what's your goal here?
Plan to implement these calls. You think that's.
I think we can't do that without the department.
Yeah.
The department has to, has to co-op with us, this whole.
Well, of course, yes. I, I'm saying though, yes, so I.
Yeah. What do we want out of the plan?
What do you want out of the plan?
I think we want engagement.
So just say that, like you said, you want involvement from families, communities and students. I mean, that's what you add there and then.
That's what we want, yeah.
That's what you're going to find.
The plan to carry out those four things.
Yeah. So from the, from the student side, how can the department get more students involved in the safe and, safe and supportive? Sorry, I don't remember off the head. Safe and supportive learning environment work that you guys are doing? And then how can we provide that model, like school guidance so that other schools who can implement those youth teams that are successful in other schools?
I think that's the gist of it. What we want to see is less bullying and harassment. That's what we want to see. We want an action plan to help reduce those incidents. I think that's, I get it.
I would also like to see maybe like, I don't know if it's called an education piece or just, you know, like Hannah mentioned. I think a lot of times this stuff, and I think a couple of you have talked about this, it's a back and forth. And I mean, sometimes you say something, you don't realize you're offending someone and they feel offended. And then they, you know, maybe they come back at you and you don't really understand what's happening or why. And then it kind of just goes back and forth. And then it just kind of goes from there. Even like, well, high school students, but adults too. So, you know, I think that maybe just a, there has to be some sort of understanding, right? So that it does, because I feel like, you know, you were saying last night, a lot of times with disciplinary actions, it's not, yeah, they're disciplined. Maybe they're suspended or whatever, but then they come back and they keep on doing the same behavior, right? How do we stop that? And can we just do like a media, I mean, something where we can just bring both parties together and just say like, okay. And, but I mean, it has to be a trained professional, right? Who does that or something like that, mediation? I don't, I don't know what that looks like, but go ahead.
Well, some of that has to do with discipline is only effective if you have, if you are able to have a replacement behavior for what it is that kid's doing. So, so you're meaning, so we're going to make you leave school for a while. I'm not sure how much that helps a kid to have, to learn like how they're supposed to be interacting with others. What is the social incompetence that can? And so I think there needs to be some matching of what the kid actually needs and, and some, some instruction that kids, support for that kid. Bullying, you know, the, the one who's being bullied, both parties. Absolutely. Discipline is about learning. We want children to come back into community. Yeah, so learn how do we, how do we be successful and how we care for each other?
And what practices for disciplinary action make sure that that happens? Where they do learn from it and they come into a mutual understanding of this is the incident that happened. We may have different stances on what we felt was right, but I know that this is the impact that it had on you. And this is the way that it makes you feel. And so how can you come to a mutual understanding of that? And I know there's a lot of buzz about restorative practices right now, but it has been implemented in some elementary schools in our town with, with success. And I think that a lot of students, no matter how mean or rude you characterize them as, in the end, they do care about the impact that they have on other people around them. And so if you get them in a room and you say, this is how the sexist or racist comments made me feel in the end, then they're really going to come to an understanding that they shouldn't make those in the future.
So the action items, I sort of hear you saying are you want, there's training, you want student involvement and you want models for others to follow. Is that kind of the gist of?
And as much as we can find out who's doing these, you know, like, so who is engaging the students in these? Who's actually doing the youth models? Who's actually getting in the conditions of learning survey? Who's doing, like, what school districts? If we can gather that data, I know you said you have data for the ones who are required to report it. But if we have any way of finding out other school districts who maybe aren't required to, it would be helpful just to know about how many are doing it and how many aren't. Or, and then these restorative kind of, you know, practices, are they doing it? Are they not doing it? Who's doing it really well? What are they doing? That would be, I think, helpful too, just to know.
I hope the grand plan that you're working on includes prevention as well. So much of what we've been talking about right now is what do we do when bullying has occurred? And, and, you know, I think, I think we need to really look at all kinds of factors. And we talked last night about ACEs. I've got to think that people who bully are oftentimes have had adverse childhood experiences. Experiences, thank you. And so when we talk about mental health and we talk about supports and we talk about the things that schools need, I, I think prevention is huge. And in, you know, thinking about why these things happen is important. And it's to be included in whatever kind of.
I agree with that 100%. I think, yeah, that's the last comment I want to make is that there's also a piece to this of other students in the sense that if you just stand by.
Yeah, that's the thing.
That's, that enables the bad behavior. Nobody challenges, especially if a peer challenges someone or a group of peers. I would find that to be very effective so that, you know, if you see it, say something.
Takes a lot of courage.
But you know, that's.
You don't want it to be the one who shoots them down.
People for life. I know I'm saying something that's way harder, but I think that's part of it.
There's a couple of things. So one, Hannah brought up, as far as I haven't looked at the conditions of education survey for a while. That would, I would agree to, for the department to take another look at that or their missing pieces. Is that conditions of learning survey of, I know it's not that long of a survey, but could that be available also for, for parent completion?
It is. Parent version and we have a staff version. And the survey has been developed over several years. And we do reliability and validity analysis every single year to get better and better at what we're looking at and make sure that the factors live within the construct of constructs appropriately. So it's a pretty tight survey. And we want to keep it pretty tight. Because once you get lots of survey items, then you get that survey fatigue. I also wanted to echo the bystander effect. We have lots of information on the bystander effect for bullying and harassment. And being able to do that proactive learning rather than reactive, setting up the culture environment. And oftentimes, just having the data there is powerful to get people to start thinking about proactive learning and setting up the environment so that kids can feel supported, decrease that bullying and harassment. Because we go into, we can go into schools and say, we don't have a problem. We don't have a problem at all. All our, everything's great. But as soon as you start booking out those data, they go, oh, so that actually setting of that for them to see things seriously and start being proactive. The student survey part is required. It's a part, a required part of the SSA. The parents and teachers is voluntary. We strongly recommend it because it's nice triangulation data. And what we often find, as the teachers, it's not that they're on an island, but they, but they, they, they see things differently than the parents and the students. And it is, is an incredible source of conversation and bringing people together at the table to see those different points of view. Because the data is quite different between teachers and students.
I know you, we need to move on and this, we could probably carry this out for a long time. I'm not, I don't have any problem with one and two. I think they're probably good. We're adding, are we adding, to me, we're talking about a plan in which we might look for the best models. Is that something we would do as a goal, you guys?
I, I think those are more like action items, right?
Yeah, I think that the goals, I think that all of the goals that we have on here are pretty good. It's just how we're measuring whether or not we're meeting. And is, is where we need to improve. Because, right, this is just, like, some of these measures, there's not some for specific goals. And what, what can we use to measure the effectiveness of this? And so, I mean, you can say, for like the workforce learning ones, are these programs implemented in their schools? Like the career readiness ones? But then. But then what measures can we do to model, like to measure the effectiveness of them in the student's eyes? And so what, what sources can we?
Yeah, I don't have a disagreement with that at all. And I think that's probably right on. Uh, but one of my goals would be to look at some effective programs. So there's some schools in Iowa that have an effective program for dealing with bullying and harassment. Who's, who's really good at that? Who's really, that would be a goal of mine. And before we do this again next year, we will have looked at some effective programs. That would be.
Maybe they can consent and talk to us about it. I have a couple of questions. Um, can we get copies of the, uh, the, um, learning for condition survey?
Yeah.
Can we look at that? Conditions for, like, sorry, I totally messed up. Um, and then, ooh. So when bullying and harassment happens in a school, who is response? Is it the principal, the vice, like who, who, who handles that situation? Who's involved in that? Is it just the perfect school? Or I just said, no.
It can be all different from the exponents. Basically you try to, I guess, address it personally and then with all the counselors and everybody else. But, well, there's different levels of bullying and some things that are as well. But eventually it can be disciplinary action. Sometimes, um, things can be misunderstandings, sometimes not. Sometimes you're dealing with, uh, behaviors in high school that step from something that happened in middle school. And so every situation is unique. And to say, well, this is the formula for everything. Well, sometimes it doesn't even get to the counselor, goes right to the principal because it's.
Okay.
It could go, it could go to the board of education as well.
At my school, there's a way to do an informal versus formal bullying complaint. There's these forms, but you can also go to like the student advocates and talk with them and then they'll help you through the process. But then there's the form of bullying is what is classified under the law as like bullying and harassment. Like you could have legal repercussions because of it. And then the informal is this is still bad, but we don't know if we can necessarily take any disciplinary action at school against you. I think is my understanding of it. And so it's a confusing process, right? Um, and I think it's different for every school and for every student.
It's not a cookie cutter process.
And it, I mean, it shouldn't be, right? Like you said, but it's, it's confusing.
When you get to the formal parts where it's like, if you're going to open enroll because of it, you know, that's when you talk about the, the formal action and what that looks like. And then what John talks about, you know, you always try to address things at the lowest level possible, the most direct level possible. But it can branch out a lot of different ways depending on the situation. So the, the formal process, when we talk about transferring and, and formal complaints should be pretty consistent. Um, how you get there is probably what looks a little different. Sure.
We have done, uh, the individual at the building level that, that has the responsibility to investigate. And we have trainings that are available for free online and those are continuing to be issued. Cause it, it is important to know best practices for investigation. Um, you know, is it a peer conflict where the power, there's no power differential and we can bring people together and talk it out? Or is there a power, really a significant difference for a lot of different reasons? And, and how do you approach that in ways that everybody can be safe?
And my final question is the, um, conditions for learning survey. Are these, so these are shared with the parents and the teachers and so for each district or building, right? So, and do they actually, how, I guess, how are these shared? Is it just different as a school decide? I'm just wondering how the parents and students are involved and, and like, is there a conversation and?
Yeah, it depends on what the school wants to do.
Okay.
So there's no requirement for them to share these data. It is our requirement, so we must share these as part of the I have school, um, performance profile and that's public.
Okay.
On, on, so you can go to the conditions for learning and see those data. District, school on there. So you can go on the site and it's conditions for learning, but not just two thousand nineteen, so twenty twenty-one is not there yet, obviously. Um, so anybody can go look at those data. Um, we share with schools, um, not just accountability data, that's, um, an N of twenty. We share, um, data of N equals ten, so they get a little bit deeper information, more information. Um, and it's up to them how they want to use those data. With our CSI, TSI schools, um, at the time, it didn't make sense. You don't require everybody to do this and lock stuff. Um, we will work with them in the conditions for learning data on their district sites. So they're all at different, uh, spots in thinking about those data. So we can, I mean, we provide guidance on how to use this. We have toolkits for them to use this, um, if we want to make this more official, you know, shined up a little bit more, make it kind of a highlight, those things.
Okay, thank you.
Every school district, I believe, is still required to listen to us or bullying and harassment.
Is it usually a counselor or is it like a teacher or?
I think it varies on the size of the school and.
And I will fall as we had a social worker.
Okay. Cause you would think it would be like a, some sort of like counselor or something who had that kind of training or background.
That's fun, who they have access to.
That's scary, I'm not gonna lie. I wouldn't want a parent doing that, I mean, a teacher doing that, but okay.
Uh, and, uh, you're suggesting, I think, that some things are gonna happen within the next month or so. I don't want to do something that would not be aligned with that.
Oh, and I don't think you are. I just wish I could tell you more stuff now.
Are we gonna have more funding for more counselors?
Well, there already is some funding available for some of those partnerships, um, with, with colleges. Um, because you have, you know, your, your counselor has to deal with your social emotional needs and your counselor has to deal with your career planning needs. It's very difficult to do both. So that's something, again, that isn't new. We're trying to, you know, there's lots of initiatives to try and figure out how you maximize each angle of that. So the partnerships there will help push a little bit more the career part on. That there's, I wouldn't say there won't be, um, potentially, but there's a different kind of priority or anything. But we're focusing on some of the core needs of what we're looking at here for some of this work. Okay.
This is something I was mentioning earlier about, um, having a better handle on schools that have Department of Ed visitors on site, um, before your time. That was the norm is that every five years there was a school accreditation visit that looked for compliance things. And then as well, and I know we've moved away from that. I'm not sure that's a good move or if it was done for economic reasons or whatever. But, um, there is something about having some oversight with people on the buildings, talking with kids and stop talking with teachers rather than doing things remote desktop. Send in your documents, we'll tell you if we like them or not. Just a little insight.
And one real quick question, it's kind of different from what we've been discussing, but, um, under item two, uh, methods of looking at data. We talked about hospital data and Department of Human Services. Does the, does the school system actually have access to that or is that?
Yeah, uh, this, they are there in collaboration with the, um, I mean, the name, the behavioral health ward.
The children's behavioral health system's ward.
Um, so we're working, so we're just part of, a part of a larger system that serves mental health, right? And so, um, Brad serves on that, uh, board. And they are right now going through a, a process to identify what indicators we'd be able to work with in this, in number two. Cause it is not something that we could actually live on our own, um, or data that we'd be able to gather on our own.
None of that's specific, right? I mean, it's, it's a.
It's, it's stateless, it's, it's big system.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. With DHS, you know, the experience we've had over the years is that, uh, the funding has been reduced. What we used to rely on at the school level is assistance with kids and families and needs. This wasn't there unless there was a real crisis. But do you think as far as being proactive and handling things, uh, problems as they were emerging rather than after they were blown out of control was kind of pushed to signs?
You said that D J S, D J S is gonna have money to coming down from this and do we know how they're prioritizing or?
Um, some of it's gonna be in collaboration with us as well. Um, there's also, I think, some additional appropriations that they receive. You know, again, another thing that got a lot more attention this year was their capacity to serve and the needs that are, that, um, have to be met. So yes, you know, when we partner, when you, when you're talking about mental health, um, it isn't just a department issue. So we are working with them on how we prioritize some of this a little bit. And then trying to maximize, you know, everybody has these pots of money. If we have a joint goal, everybody contributes a little bit to that, we can have a much greater effect. So some of that, you're gonna see some of that being rolled out also. I have more information on that for you as well.
Okay. Do you think that in August we'll have more information or?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Right, does anyone have any other questions or comments on this one or any other, any of the other, um, goals? I, so at this point, um, do we just, um, come back to these? Um, do you guys wanna do whatever you guys usually do? And then we come back to these and revisit them in August? Maybe once we know a little bit more about what's happening and see if we want to change anything or add anything or anything like that? Does that make sense?
I think if we maybe get a, a draft.
Yeah.
Whatever revisions were there for us to look at again in August. But we also talked about the possibility of, of adding a goal. I'm not sure if it has to be adding a goal or whatever, but it seems like, uh, what I've been reading and I know that, um, our guest speaker yesterday, Robert, talked about. A golden opportunity to reimagine what education should look like. And so when we sit in as a board of education and can provide some direction and leadership, um, what can we learn from the past? And what can we learn from even, um, going through COVID that could make us better on the, on the other end as we come out of it? As you say, we have a lot of money and if we don't do something that's impactful, shame on us.
Look, I just wanted to address that typically what we do is after this, we do take what you, the changes that you guys make to your goals. We go ahead and we create a rough draft. We'll share it with Brooke and Betty a couple of times prior to the August meeting and then you guys revisit it in August. Um, and then if you want to add goals in August, I guess that would probably be the best time to do that.
Okay.
Um, I would just caution, you guys are at five goals right now.
Yeah.
So if you are gonna keep all five of those goals and you're looking at a large number.
And, and my understanding is that from the conversation, the main thing was that how are we going to, um, hold the, held ourselves accountable for these? So what are the action items? And then are you gonna report on those each month? Our board members are gonna report on those. I mean, I think that was the step that was sort of missing. Um, that was intended to be part of this, this conversation. So I'm not sure we got there yet. Um, but I think that's an important part. Or it's just each year us wordsmithing something that we talk about and we all know is important. We don't know how we're really gonna move forward. And then how does the board engage with that? You know, individually, is this tied to, you talked about subcommittee work? Do you want a subcommittee tied to each goal? Do you want individuals tied to each goal? We're all clearly collectively part of this. But if we have a board meeting in August or September, we say, let's have an update on our goals. What is that gonna look like? I don't know if we're there yet.
I don't think we're there. I think, I think on some, I, I know we want maybe a little bit more information. Um, and then I think that, I mean, I think the action items, I think that we could probably work on that a little bit more. Cause I think for each goal, I know that like for the, um, for preparing learners for Iowa's workforce, I think we want some more information. And then, um, on this one, it sounds like maybe after we hear what's going on and what the priorities are, maybe we can kind of align our, you know, our action items to what's happening and actually what's gonna be achievable. And then we can kind of, you know, so I think that that, once we hear that, maybe we can maybe have clear act. But I think we have a couple of action items right now, so I think we definitely need to.
And, and that's just for really, I mean, one of the goals.
Yeah.
We have five, so there, there are some other things we may be able to do. And then like Mike's comment on, we want a presentation from a group or something, that's something we can do.
Yeah.
Outside of any of this and schedule, sorry, buddy.
I may have forgotten what I was.
Sorry.
Actually, two things, I think, um, these goals are so big and broad in general. I don't know ever, I mean, it's gonna be a huge task force to get to something that's.
But like pick one thing.
Yes, you're.
What, what's the one thing at each board we need that we want to do? Is there one thing we want to look at? That you, you can't do it all, but pick one thing, do one thing that we can start having a conversation about and act on. And that will guide us to what the next steps need to be.
That's a good thought. Back to what you were saying, John. I don't think we should lose sight of the, of the opportunity to reimagine. And we had Robert come in and, you know, he spent a lot of time with us talking about that. And we probably don't want to add another whole goal. I mean, I don't know, you're right, five is, is a bunch and I don't know how to do that. Is there somewhere in here that, that that fits under an already existing priority that could become a goal under that priority? And, you know, it occurs to me that our priority of eliminating achievement and opportunity gaps is narrow in the sense that it's not talking about expanding or re, reimagining education. It's talking about gaps, but maybe that's the priority where something like that would fit under. And that's kind of when you led yesterday, I don't know, but I, I, I absolutely agree. I don't think, I don't think we want to just go back to all the, the goals we've had and the priorities we've had over six years and not take this opportunity to add some punch to that.
Yeah, it's, um, it's a discussion that we have enough time for.
Exactly.
So, you know, yesterday, yesterday, so we have, uh, you know, an ask on a model school for, um, for environment. There was an ask yesterday about competency based learning, what that looks like. Can we get more information and presentation on that? So maybe your first step is what's the next piece we need for each goal? Identify one thing you want for each goal. So we have two right there. We can schedule those at a board meeting and then that helps you know what your next step is. Cause in order to reimagine, we have to know the part we want to, to look at. So we'll have some additional information for you too, because as we go through, you know, all these surveys that we have and all the information we're getting from the field, there's a whole extra set of that because of the money that we have and how we have to look at information and what we're gathering. So I'll give you some more information there, but maybe you want to take a moment, you know, we have 10 minutes and identify, do you want to have one ask for each of those goals that we could schedule for a board meeting for a next step?
I have a quick question before we do that. So for the training learners for tomorrow's workforce, is there a division within the Department of Education that is responsible for career exploration and planning? Cause I know there's future ready, is that within the department?
Yeah.
Is there something else?
Well, they're sort of both. And I think, um, you know, Jeremy's department maybe covers a little bit more of that, but actually the future ready part, I'm gonna talk a little bit more about that, um, in my report, um, on how we're doing some different things there. I, I think for some different reasons, um, we'll talk about that though too. But yeah, it does, it falls within us, but not solely within us. Um, but certainly we could provide you information on what it looks like and some current data.
That would be helpful, cause I think all the data that we have for that goal right now is just are these programs at the schools? But they don't measure the effectiveness of them.
Yeah.
And I think that for a majority of students, it's seen as kind of a joke and they don't really help them. Those, the programs that are in place at schools don't help them. Um, and so of course I'm saying this quite often today, student involvement is very important in this process about how to improve this, these career exploration plans and programs. Um, in this goal, I think we really have the opportunity to do that reimagine education and to look beyond community colleges into what, how else we could reimagine like the, the abilities that we have to explore careers in high school. So that's not an action item, but how does that work within the department and how can we involve students?
So yeah, I think that where I struggle with is kind of, you know, we know kind of what we want, but like how, how do we turn that into an action item, right? So what, what does that look like? What can we do? What, you know, so I mean, so how do we involve students in this and make sure that, you know, they're actually having career pathway planning and in coaching? That is actually not a joke and it's actually helpful for them. How do we make sure that that is in every single building? So could that be an action item? We want to make sure that.
School improvement advisory committees and students are supposed to be part of that. And one mandatory subjects to talk about is. That is one of the expectations for school districts. Now, how's school districts do that?
Yeah, I think that's where, I mean, it gets sticky to implementation, right? Is what students do you have on that board? Is it ones that are handpicked by admin to say what they want to hear? Or is it students who actually should be involved in the process who have a wider way of experience? Is it ones that are handpicked by admin to say what they wanna hear or is it students who actually should be involved in the process who have a wider way of experience?
So in the interest of time, and you're talking about it, if there's one ask for each whole area, I think that'd be a good start, but maybe you need to narrow the, narrow the scope down to make it more manageable. Uh, I know I was with the eliminating achievement and opportunity gaps. And the one that most intrigued me with that is the role of all learners having access for quality early education. And for that, looking at, can we get numbers from Head Start? Can we also find out if there are barriers to those who um cannot access because of transportation or childcare? And also to get a breakdown of uh, a breakdown as far as ethnicity, ethnicity with uh free and reduced lunch types of poverty, what, whatever breakdown we can get. So that if there's a group of students that are being left out, how can we make sure that they have that sense?
I'd also like to, cause there are a lot of, I know there are a lot of preschools in the Des Moines area, you know, both, I mean, I send my son to one that was, you know, funded by the state and the one that wasn't. So there are lots of options. But I think in rural areas, there might not be as many options. So that might be a barrier. So in a rural area, you might have maybe one or two options. And so, you know, I mean, it's, and I don't know if those are um ones that are um funded by the state or not. They might be, maybe if there are only private ones there and you have to pay for it, that might be a barrier or maybe transportation or getting there or whatever. And especially if it's a half day program, which both my sons were a half day program. So we coupled together morning and afternoon, which involved taking him, picking him up, taking him, picking him up every single day. So.
We talked about yesterday where the staff felt that they could get the numbers from Head Start probably. I think that'd be a good place.
Head Start is really, that's urban, right? Or is it, is it rural too? Okay.
At least get the numbers there and then we'll have a, and then my pictures could be great. I'm not sure how you would go around and unless people provided data automatically, it's a lot.
So the private ones, we don't have access to?
Well, I don't, I don't know about that, but I know that it's really hard. You know, the kids that are in the publicly funded preschools and you can probably find out Head Start and you might be able to find out some from the, from the private ones. It's the kids that aren't in anything that will be really hard to identify. I know in Marshalltown, we did a door to door in two of the low, the lower economic.
There's your hundred million right there.
Volunteers.
Oh.
Which you can't rely on. I mean, that's not sustainable either, but we went door to door and found in, in the Roger School District. I don't know, hundreds, hundreds of kids that weren't in. And I don't know how you get to that, but we need to start somewhere.
This is one of those that kind of ties in legislatively too, because
Yes.
Every year, the, or last several years, I mean, the legislature's uh increased transportation expenses uh for schools as far as giving them additional funding. Um, if there can be shown a need uh as far as equitable, equitable transportation for school districts to provide preschool transportation and have funding for that, that could be legislated out of policy type of situation.
And that's actually another thing where we have a thing on. I wish, you're all bringing up really good topics that I think you're gonna be very pleased when you find out some of the work that we're doing. I'll give a little update on that in my report, but there actually is a whole everything you just said, that's being reviewed to priorities or somebody behind that as well. That's gonna be looked at for all the reasons you just said. Um, so I think that's, that's coming as well.
I, I, I have a, what I think is a really big picture question. You know, if we, we're gonna reimagine and based on what we've learned and the fact that we did a good job when the pandemic came, but you know, we weren't fully prepared. That was plan as you go, go as you plan. There's gonna be another pandemic. So are we, are we gonna agree that in school learning is best when there's a next pandemic? And that we would not close, we wouldn't want schools closed at any level? I mean, should we be talking about that? I don't know the answer. I'm just raising the question. I, I just think that's a huge question. And I think people, it's one thing to have gone through the pandemic and everybody knows, wow. You know, you weren't ready. If it happens again, we, we better have a plan or we're gonna look like the people that dropped the ball. Uh, now you might already have addressed that in this up thing. I get it. But you know, the, the way the schools worked out, there wasn't a lot of transmission in schools. There was, I mean, I, I'd like to know the data on that. I'd like to know that, you know, with the medical advisory groups that helped schools. Maybe there should be a model that all schools have that. Maybe uh, maybe it's different preschool to three and middle school and high school. Um, but you know, I, I just think that's such a big thing. And you know, sorry, are we reimagining that schools wouldn't close? And does that mean we don't spend millions and millions and millions of dollars having this virtual system which overtaxes staff, teachers, educators?
I don't know that there's one answer.
But I'd like to have a priority or a prefer, you know, we're a priority group. We could say our model is in person. And unless there's bombs in the air or, you know, like if it was just what we experienced, would we do it again?
But we might also, instead of saying, and I don't know this, but instead of saying our priority is in person always, every time, you know.
Oh, I get it. I mean, always is a bad word. I know.
Maybe it's.
We just don't know.
Need to go back to a little bit more local control. I'm really disturbed that we lost a lot of local control. Every.
I'm just asking the question.
Packing plant is way different. Center where, you know, it's a very small school and, and you know, people are, are in different kinds of jobs. You know what I'm saying? So I think, I think every school has, every community has some decision making to make. Decision making to make.
But is anybody doing that then? See that, I mean, I think we need to ask a question. I, I am not thinking that in the next one minute, we're gonna
Right.
Talk about the answer. But is that a valid thing for us to address?
Good conversation.
I, I can, I, I can provide two things to that. Um, I think if you go back, you know, the governor has said publicly that if um she would do it over again, she wouldn't have closed schools. Um, I think the other.
That's not a law or anything. That's just.
Well, but here's, here's the other piece to that. So what's different when you're talking about this idea of local control, what the last year looks like? When there is a disaster proclamation, authority changes and it changed the authority of the department. It changes the authority of the governor and it changes the idea of what local control is. So um, no one has ever lived through a disaster proclamation that has lasted that long. And I think that's the difference in understanding what that means. So the things you're talking about, I think there's two different parts to that. It's one, um, how do you prepare for a disaster that you've never had before? But the second piece is what are all the things that we have helped um address because of what we learned? When you talk about the virtual learning, what the department is doing is providing an inordinate amount, that's what a word am I trying to say? Exorbitant amount of resources so schools don't have to. Iowa E-Learning Central is designed exactly for that because the burden isn't on the schools. And it's not meant to be a replacement for school. It's meant to be a supplemental option. As we heard kids talk about yesterday, classes are recorded, they're available, might be great for some people, but it's not a replacement. Um, so things that we can do long term that better provide options for whether you're in a large district or a small district. You know, I don't think we, we, we didn't get the perspective of small schools yesterday. And, and I don't think we really got to the reimagine idea. I think we got sort of the, the response, but we know it's there. We know what it is. So it, it is, it will depend on um our preparedness to pivot, which is the word that got overused, but is true, um, did change. And so when we heard, I, I have some more survey information I'll, I'll give back to you as well in terms of just our capacity to go online. That was one of the biggest hurdles right there. Freiban access, that's another one that's being resolved, not only by us, but at the, at the state level. Because all those things affected everything. So um, from that standpoint, will look very different. From a medical and health standpoint, that's still a different sort of question. And we have to, you know, we've identified um how that functions and how that looks like, but our understanding medically of the impact on schools is still an ongoing question in terms of what would be the other scenario where something like this would potentially happen. Um, and that's something I think we leave best with those medical experts, but we do know from what we learned. Um, and as we've watched this play out, Iowa was a good model of how it was successful in, in, in many, many ways. And, and but not all states are in that, that same position. So I would expect there to be more official reporting on that. Not necessarily, we have data on from the school standpoint, um, but from health and services, I think that's certainly um something that would, would we'd be born happy to provide more information on of what they've learned, but I don't think it's inconsistent with what the um general observations have been that we've seen just in this past year.
And, and I think there's a whole lot more data that needs to be analyzed from this past year. We didn't see a lot of outbreaks in schools, but what happened at home? The kids were safe, the kids were healthy, the kids came back to school. But did kids take things home that we don't know about because there wasn't a lot of contact tracing? There wasn't case management, you know, and so it's so hard to say anything definitive about this last year's experience until we get a whole lot more data.
But we do need to find out.
We do need to find out and it needs to be a discussion.
Just a thought before we move on is, you know, I think that the people around this table feel like having in-person school is, is probably the best option for most people. Not for all people.
Right.
And if we're looking at the reimagining things, um, one of the train of thoughts that people in this profession have had is, you know, there could be the situation where you have a combination of things where it's in person and it's virtual or it's in person and it's a group or it's just completely individualized. So I know uh, yesterday Mike, he brought up, it'd be nice if everybody had an IEP. I, I've been on that train for many years, but you know, the logistics, the cost of it is, is exorbitant. But as we look to reimagine, as we have these discussions, it'd be interesting, you know, for future work sessions to, to spend more time getting a little deeper on what does reimagine mean? Cause right now we're just kind of scratching the surface and throwing out vague ideas.
Yeah, and I think that's a good point. I think that, you know, what we learned, I mean, at least yesterday was kind of what things worked well, right? So I think that, you know, and those are just simple things, having recordings available for students and having access. I'm not saying a fully online course, but just having access to that 24/7 so that you can log in at midnight. Just like I was saying, I like the ability to be able to, you know, when I'm working from home, I have my computer. I, you know, before the pandemic, I never would have had a full setup in my basement of all, every equipment thing I needed to work from home. Now I can go downstairs and work for hours if I want to at midnight, you know? And that's great, but the thing is, is that you need to have that flexibility. And I don't think that up until the pandemic, schools had that flexibility in mind. And so maybe reimagining schools, part of that is just giving students the flexibility. And if they wanna work ahead, guess what? These modules are online. Go ahead and work ahead if you want to. And then you can meet with the teacher maybe separately or something. Maybe that's what that looks like. And so maybe it's just kind of meeting the student where they are and allowing them to thrive and do instead of just holding them back and keeping them here. Or if there's some remediation that needs to be done, I know you guys are already doing this. Here's some modules, here's some supports you need for that. And I know you guys are great at doing that, but what about the students who wanna work ahead and who are just bored out of their minds or wanna do something else? Here's some modules on this. And then just how can we make it so that they can, you know, get something, do an assignment and then have, you know, different credits for different classes? How do we do that? You know, so I think that that's, these are all things that Hannah's brought up that are just, you know, you shouldn't have to go take this and this and this when you can do this one thing and you can get competencies for three different things, right? So I think that those things, just the, I think flexibility is huge and that is the way of the future. If anything has caused during this pandemic, I mean, anyone who worked from home or anything, that flexibility is key. Sorry, but.
I was just gonna say, what, what really struck me from yesterday is, and you've, you've focused on the academics side of this. It was the emotional, the lack of community that almost seemed to bother these students the most. Rather than, I know they all had problems with access and how their academics were presented, but um, they all said something about loss of community and not being able to, able to interact with people. Uh, so I think maybe for reimagining, we have to put some focus on that. How can we provide the community and the interaction in the type of event that we experienced? Cause I think that my impression of what was presented was just as important as the academics.
And, and that's what I was gonna say, so that like we're, learning is just one piece of what schools offered and that's the thing we learned the most. The essential services that they provide for so much, not just the kids, but the families and the communities. That's the part that got um really sort of exacerbated. And so when we think about all these different options for learning, but what about, what happens when you don't have a place for your kid to go? What happens when you don't have food? What happens when you don't have an adult checking on you? What happens if we don't have access to go be with your peers? All of that is the stuff that we really have to pay attention to when we reimagine. And you know, there's this idea of where does learning occur and when does learning occur? But then where do we get all the rest of it? And, and it has to be more than just the school. It's what sort of um wraparound services, partners, supports? Can we put in place that we know we needed, cause we had to do it this year, that we wanna make sure we keep going? That's all part of this, this conversation.
Yes.
Because when students leave school, the support shouldn't stop. They should be able to go home and have those supports as well. Especially when they go out for the summer too.
Well, the next agenda, I, after this, there's a very small agenda item on the calendar, so I think we're fine. I think that this is, this is all important conversations. I think just that Hannah is talking about is just a conversation on when we look at how learning has been reimagined, um, do we just have a, a work session on that? These are the things that we've done in response to what happened, what's still missing. And I think that's certainly something we could have a just very direct conversation on, that we could prepare for, for something for as well.
Is that something we'd wanna hear your updates in August before we do have that or?
We could do it in August and we would have all the information we would need by then, yes.
Okay. Cause I think I wanna, would wanna hear what you have to say about like things that you guys are planning to do and stuff like that before we have that conversation.
I just had a small comment that uh, when things like cool happen, we need to be prepared to use the resources that we have in the best possible way. Send teachers home for three months and say, oh, do your best. Uh, it just isn't enough. And I can't imagine uh being with my colleagues for three months in some way and not developing better lessons, uh strategically planning for the future. We're talking about moving in different directions. Man, would I love to have that, that three months to work on my colleagues with that. So we just need to use our time well as well.
I think the reality of those three months too was, it was unrealistic to ask teachers to use all of their time to do that planning, right? Like they're humans too and they needed, we were all dealing with the fact that everything had just been turned upside down and asking them to create, just reimagine education in that time period, I feel like was a little bit unfair because we're all trying to deal with and take care of ourselves mentally and emotionally, because we know if we, if we can't do that, then it's gonna be harder to create viable plans.
Man, good, I got from teachers that they worked harder than.
They worked.
I'm sure.
One of my teachers doing.
Yeah, they worked hard. And I'm not gonna fault what the educators, they were thrown into a situation that they were not prepared for. And there's no way we could have prepared them for this.
Right. But you know, I think that we, in talking about reimagining schools, I think that we have to understand. I think that what was really clear yesterday, I think you're right. I mean, the I just, to me, it seemed like they had a traumatic experience. I don't think these students were the only ones who had a traumatic experience. I think that probably teachers had a traumatic experience and I think that it takes time to heal and move forward from that. So I don't think that, you know, all of a sudden next year, we're just gonna be like, let's reimagine schools. Let's keep on going. Woo hoo. You know, everything is fine now. I don't think it's gonna be like that. So I think that we really need to, and talking about reimagining schools, talk about how do we move on from this? How do we bring, cause I think that in the fall, when everyone comes, I mean, I think that there's just, I just don't think that people are gonna be like, okay. I mean, these students are not okay. It's not okay. It won't be okay and the summer won't make it okay. I mean, what are we gonna do to make these?
Reimagine school is healing in itself.
Exactly.
Have control over your future, at least in some point, in some way, in some aspect in that in its own is helpful. So.
So I think that that needs to be maybe a focal port point, at least for the next year is how do we heal from the trauma that we all experienced or else it's gonna be a hot mess?
Do you think, okay, so like the work session about like what you guys had done new during the pandemic and was successful? Do you think, okay, so like the work session about like what you guys had done new during the pandemic and was successful? Do you think that that would be the most effective way to move forward with this like whole theme of reimagining education? Would that give us the best information that we need to, to do that?
I think it's just a starting conversation. I thi- I think what we need is, uh, you guys need to have an update on everything that we're are gonna do differently as a result of this, then to say, now what's still missing? So what I want to be able to share is all the things we're gonna go do differently. So we can do that. And then from that conversation, we'd say, okay, what's the, what's the part that's still, we still want to address?
I would challenge my fellow board members between now and August to do some research on reimagining schools.
There's
there's some excellent articles out there. There's a wide range of opinions and a lot of wide range of, uh, how should I say? Bias as far as where you think should go or not go. And but the more we read and I, this is important for us as board members to spend some own time digging. So we don't come to me, okay, what do we know?
Yeah. I think that's a good point.
And we should have an avenue to share those with each other. Cause I think that would be.
Have a what?
An avenue to share these. We, I mean, we can just email them.
Yeah, we can email, like anything they can find. Yeah. Yeah. If they find any articles or any information or research or anything, that'd be really helpful, I think.
Cause I know that there's a whole organization like the XQ Institute dedicated to like reimagining high school. That's been around for a while. And it's got a student perspective on everything that they do.
Okay. If you could share that, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Let's move on to the calendar one.
Okay, yeah.
Time for a break, I think.
All right. So what's happening?
The, um, so tab B is just the state board meeting format and frequency. This is a draft of meeting dates in the master calendar, just for your review. Questions, concerns? I don't know. Do we, isn't it action item today or is it just for review? I think it's just for review, isn't it? Calendar.
I, I think it was part of discussion to determine whether or not we wanted to continue with one day, whether or not you guys wanted to do, cause I, I think one of the things we heard when I reached out to board members was that you guys do have so many different topics that you want to discuss and that, um, sometimes it felt like the timeframe that you had with one day wasn't quite enough. But then there's logistic, logistical issues in having two days. I think that was gonna be part of the conversation. And then we proposed a calendar to determine whether or not that's the calendar that you would all like to go with.
If, if we say, yes, we like this, that doesn't mean we can't change it, right? So like if we came up with something that we really wanted to do two days, we could always do that. Is that correct?
I think we have enough notice. Cause then we can provide the public notice. I mean, correctly, if I'm wrong, Thomas on that, yeah, I think we have enough notice to be able to notify.
Okay.
You know, I don't know the answer, but I'm, but it's, every time we meet, it's frustrating because we run out of time. We don't have time for the really important discussions. There's always so much to cover and, and I don't know. I mean, I don't know how we deal with that.
I was thinking maybe, I agree, Betty. And I think we, you know, I think this is a frustration because it's like, we do the work sessions, but then it's like, by the time we get the information, we don't have time for like an actual meaningful discussion.
Right.
So maybe what we could do is, I'm just throwing this out there. I mean, we have Zoom, so maybe we could do like, um, not, not around the board meeting. Cause I feel like, I mean, a day long board meeting and everyone has to travel. I don't want to extend that. And then the community college, I know meets usually the evening before, right? So, um, we can't kind of cut into that time, but maybe on the off months, because we meet kind of generally every other month, we could do maybe like a Zoom session on a certain topic. So maybe have that be our work session. And then, and then we could have maybe like a two hour kind of block where we could have like presentation for an hour and then have some, an hour for some meaningful discussion. Um, I don't know if people would be okay with that, but that's, I, I feel like we have a lot of things to discuss and I, I, I agree. I feel like we don't have a lot of time for discussion. Some of these discussions are longer, maybe than an hour. So.
And our work sessions aren't really work sessions. They're, they're education. I mean, we're
Yeah.
learning things and hearing information from the department, which is, we need to be able to make good decisions. But you're right, then we don't really, we're not able to work through the things we hear and learn.
Would it help if we, you know, sent you the, an overview ahead of time so that there could be more discussion during that time? Or is it too?
Probably.
Or maybe a recording of the session that we could watch and then we could come here, ready to discuss.
That might be a way to approach it because I think how we've been approaching work sessions is exactly that. You guys have said we like information.
Yeah, no, which we definitely need and we appreciate that. Yeah. I mean, if you could have sent us like a, a recording of a video and we could watch it, like an hour long video on something and we could watch PowerPoint and listen to it. And then we could just come ready to discuss. I think that'd be great.
So Betty, are you recommending that we reimagine board meetings?
I, I'm all for, for webinar-like things.
So, so one recommendation would be, is that a pre-recorded update from the department before work sessions, so that the work session could be a conversation, potentially adding, if, if we kept it as an hour right before the meeting in person, would having the recording ahead of time be enough? Or would you still like to add additional dates? And here's my, there's my only reason why. Um, part of the reason of getting the calendar out here ahead of time as well, so that you know when these dates are. We have to have every board member here. And, and I think when we, if we're having a conversation about adding more dates, I think that creates more challenges of having everybody here. And, and I'm happy to do that, um, but that has to take commitment from this board. So I think that's up for you guys to decide.
I think they're pre-recorded and then people can kind of watch it again, the flexibility whenever you want.
How, how far in advance would we get that recording? Cause that's what's gonna be difficult.
Yeah. If it's like a week up prior, that might not be good. Maybe for some people, maybe like.
How soon would you want it?
I would say probably a month.
Could be something that you guys, I think you guys were talking about, um, one, having, um, basically presentations of some sort, major roles and priorities. And so I mean, maybe that's a start. I don't know that we can start on those. Um, but our folks.
Oh, yeah. Cause we have.
Our folks need to have a, a lot of advanced time too as well, just because of their whole, um, you know, normal work. And so I guess you guys would need to identify what you would be able to reasonable timeline to, to provide that to you.
Well, I think maybe a start would be, so I know you have a lot of, I didn't know if you wanted Ann, um, to, to provide the update during the actual board meeting or if you wanted to, if that could be a pre-recorded, something that you could get to us, you know, after, whenever you can tell us that information. So maybe like, I don't know, the end of July or something? Or is that something that you want to present during the meeting? I guess is my question.
There will be, um, public information on that available. So I'll tell you two things. Please read your weekly updates, um, and you'll have everything in there that you need. Um, and there will likely be a press release on it that will give you information as well. Typically we link to those in our updates. So, um, so then I think we could go right to the conversation. It would be, it would be sort of disingenuous to try and recreate that in a video of me doing the same things. But I think you'll have for that topic, you'll have everything you need ahead of time.
So we can just kind of come.
I think we could just re-link to Heather, if you can help remind me, when it gets closer to the board meeting, if you have not reviewed these materials, please do so. This will be part of our work session.
Perfect.
Cause they'll be available.
I think that's, yeah. I mean, I think that's a start. And then maybe for the, cause I think we kind of maybe want to have some more discussion on our, kind of given what you have to say, maybe some more discussion on our, our action items. And then maybe for the September meeting, we could dive into the things that we've requested. Does that make sense? Does that give you guys enough time or?
So for, do you want a video recording for August? You just want that update? And then in August, we end up a conversation and pick the one you want for September.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. We could do it the, the board meeting before, then I think that would give us enough time to be able to.
So do you guys need to know now for September? Is when, is, is if we, if we tell you in August, is that enough time for the September board meeting?
Not since those two board meetings are.
Are so close. Yeah. So should we pick something now?
I think so. I think it would give our staff members the time to be able to create whatever recording they need and, um, provide ample time for you guys to review it for whoever to create.
You, you asked for the one yesterday on competency-based learning that I mentioned to Brad.
Oh, yeah. That's a good one.
Should we just go ahead and use that one?
Listen, I would like an update on that. Yeah. And there's also the career pathways one too. And then there was, yeah. So I think we have, I think we have a couple to start with. So if we want to pick one and then do another, so maybe we have the first kind of three, I think.
I don't have a problem with that, but we had conversations yesterday about, uh, the, the work of the board. As far as are we gonna have subgroups or do legislative advocacy? When do we, are we gonna talk about those? Or is that like a work session for next time?
Yeah.
That was sort of the goal for this. So I think, so maybe that, maybe that does need to be your first work, work session to really tighten down. What is gonna be the portal?
Do you think that doing it in August would give us enough time to really be able to make any legislative?
Yeah. Cause just, yeah. Yes. August would be.
We can, I guess maybe we can start with, if anyone is interested in serving on the Equity or Legislative Committee, if you could email me. I think that Betty and I are gonna serve on each one of those. Just because we're in leadership roles. So I think Betty's gonna do the Equity Committee. I'll do the Legislative one. So, um, and I can connect with Kim and see if she still wants to chair the Equity Committee. And if not, then I'll need someone to chair it. So let's start with maybe trying to create something. And then I think that maybe if we can have some thoughts before we come together again on what that would look like and any, any, cause I think we need to come together with some, you know, something. I mean, if we have like a priority or an action item or something like that, that we want to take forward with, then I think that's a good idea too. So.
And it's your guys' board and your guys' agenda. We have certain things that have to be on the agenda, but in general, we are kind of reaching out saying, hey, what are some topics that you guys want us to add to the agenda? So I think this is your guys', you know, your opportunity between now and August to figure out what do you want your agenda to look like.
So I think that we can start with that. And then I think on the August agenda, we definitely need time for talking about this. And I don't know. I mean, cause I feel like we already have a work session. So maybe we actually, uh, time on the agenda to talk about the committees and that'd be good too.
Okay. I'd be interested for the legislative.
The legislative? Okay.
She's going and, and this, we have five minutes.
Oh, yeah. So this, no one, if anyone has any, should we just, if everyone's okay with the calendar?
I was just gonna say, some of us know certain dates were not going to be for the meeting.
Okay.
If this was the March meeting, I'm not gonna be there. We couldn't have a meeting because there isn't a quorum.
All right.
If I have this meeting.
Correct. Yeah, there is no quorum. Yeah.
And I will not be here for the March meeting.
So if you could just email those to Carol. So if, if based on the current calendar, you know of an existing conflict, please email that to Carol.
Okay.
And then I think it's okay to, you know, as you look at it, if anything else pops up, um, let us know. But I think then we could, you know, maybe finalize it in August. But I just wanted to know if there was any, you know, we, we need to put something out there for consideration. So this is sort of a draft of, for consideration.
So did I understand John's suggestion correctly that in August, we're going to talk about creating a committee structure? I know there was a discussion of two current committees. So are we gonna have a work session on a proposed committee structure? Cause I kind of think it's better to have a plan laid out than just say, oh, let's talk about a committee structure. Because there may be eight different views on what that's gonna look like. But if we have a, something to start with.
I guess catch that plan.
Brooke and Betty put together, we think this would be a good committee structure. This is what we think the committees could be doing, or this is how we want the committees to operate. And then have that as our discussion. A lot of times if you just throw it out there, I think we see that in our meetings now that we just go around and round and round and don't really reach any conclusions. So.
Yeah, we can do that. Betty, um, can you work with us on that, Thomas? Thank you.
Shannon and I will.
Shannon and I, okay. All right. Let's get something on the calendar.
That's an excellent point. And part of the subcommittees would be what are your rules and responsibilities?
While we're talking about committees, um, NASB has committees that they request that we have, um, oh, sorry, you wanted to break.
Yeah. Well, I think we need five minutes before and we have to start on time. So the meeting is supposed to start at 10. So I mean, I want to share that in your, in your board report time. I remember report time.
All right. So do I need to gobble out?
So we'll start up at 10.